For seventeen years. And I coached intermittently to help out.
Yeah.
But then, once Johnson was born, he resigned and we were kind of out of it. Didn't follow the high school track at all. And I went back in.
Paul, do you, do we have signups there? We'll go ahead and take this. Okay. All right. District Board of Directors. Let the record show that all board members are present except for Brian Green, who is excused. Had to be out, I think, for his daughter's wedding. I think so. Have fun with that, Brian. We have the consent agenda. Does anyone move that we accept the consent agenda?
That we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Do I hear a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Let it be known that the consent agenda is approved. First, we'll start off with comments from citizens, and we'll begin with Mitchell Moore.
Mitchell Moore, 2929 Northeast Loop Drive, tonight on behalf of Devils Lake Neighborhood Association. And I'd just like to take a moment to update you on a meeting that occurred. Miles was great enough to set up a meeting between the leadership of Benai Breth Camp and the Devils Lake Water Improvement District and the Neighborhood Association. So Paul and Miles and I visited the camp on August 18th and received an extensive tour and discussed the camp's upcoming plans and learned something more about their outreach programs, such as the donations that they make to the backpack program and a few other things, and the day camp that they do every year for, you know, local residents of Lincoln City. It was a great discussion. And the kind of real news, and I think it's pertinent here and just to be aware of, is, you know, that they have some really exciting plans for the camp. They're planning on investing nearly $10 million in the camp. You've seen some of it already. They rebuilt, they have these real, these extensive rebuild and expansion plans. And they're timed to complete in 2020, which is the 100th anniversary of the camp. So they've recently completed a new dining hall. I think everybody's seen that. It's beautiful. They have a new model cabin. They're going to a two-story model. The intent there is they can get twice as many campers and half as much space, so they're going to increase the amount of green space in the camp. They've got a new state-of-the-art medical center. That's really pretty amazing. The climbing towers and the zip lines are pretty recent. And they've, just this year, you know, we've all seen the lakefront lodge that they've built, which is kind of the visible look of what these cabins will look like. Their cabins will look very similar, except that they don't have the garage on the front. And that'll be used for lakeside activities. I've handed you each kind of the diagram of it and some of the timing of the plans. Yet to come is a big campus center. They're going to start that hopefully in November. And eventually, through the next years, through 2020, they'll be adding, replacing the existing cabins with seven additional two-story cabins. They're going to build a gymnasium up by the swimming pool, a nature center, an amphitheater. They've got some ideas for lakefront improvements done in kind of a natural way. We also discussed some of the things they're doing today, and they've started a gardening program, and I think this is mentioned in Paul's report. When they were talking about their gardening, I suggested that, that maybe they could expand that into some shoreline planting kind of plants, and that Paul would be a great resource for them to do that. And they immediately thought that was a great idea, and I'm glad to see that, that that seems to have come forward. So another area that they're very keenly interested in is the sewer-ing of the lake, because, as you might imagine, they're a big anchor. They have commercial, very, very sophisticated, we actually got kind of a tour of their septic systems, and they have a pretty sophisticated septic system. It's commercial, it's expensive, because it's done, you have to inspect that every single year. So they're highly motivated and would love to be a part of making that happen. So they're going to be a great asset for us. So the final thing about that is the camp officials have, have been invited to the next Devils Lake Neighborhood Association. We've yet to be confirmed, but it sounds pretty, pretty good. If it's not this one, we'll have them in a future one. To present their plans, because effectively, the whole camp will be new again by 2020. And they really want the neighborhood to be involved and active, and they want to be active and involved in the neighborhood. So our meeting is tentatively set for October 18th, but we'll get announcements out on that. So we're really, really excited to have this new opportunity to work with the camp, and they're excited to be involved with, with you guys. So just thought I'd review that. It was a great meeting, I thought, too, Paul.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's it.
Great. Thank you. Thanks, Mitch. Thanks, Miles, for putting that together. I know you were instrumental in that. Okay. John Fonso, is that correct?
Forrest.
Forrest, I'm sorry.
Hi, guys.
Hi.
John Forrest, 1820 Northeast West Devils Lake Road. I came in front of you, the board was comprised differently six months ago or so, when Paul had let out, let it known that-
Excuse me, John, you're not getting picked up on the mic.
Oh, I'm sorry. They were gonna, you guys were going to take bids for organizing the Devils Lake Revival, which I've done several contests of different nature over the years and had pretty good success. So I came before you, asking to be able to do it again. And I, I was expanding, I tried to expand on what was already existed. Revival has kind of been realistically kind of a dull event, and I wanted to incorporate an SUP contest as part of it, and that would bring in a whole different group, and also try and start a small scale, the first year revival of the Blues Festival they used to have here every year. And that would get two factions, two different factions that would be coming to the event. So I tried to do that. Of course, there was more organizing involved in, in that than what Paul wanted for the regular revival. So anyway, I wasn't able to come to the event. I heard it was the same old village sideshow that it's been. It was not very well-attended, and the people that were there happened to be coming to the park anyway, and just happened to be the revival was going on. So I, when I made the presentation, I'd done some research, you know, and done some work and found a theme to go along with the revival. This is, I think his first name is Claude Thompson, Jr. He's actually a chief of the Selects Tribe, doing stand-up paddle boarding, which would have been a perfect, you know, would have dovetailed perfectly with what I wanted to do. So that was kind of my thing, and also, I had a, it was a pretty good way of bringing the tribe and the casino into the whole thing. So, so that was my, that was my pitch, and I made a presentation to you guys, and it seemed like everything was going well. Everybody was kind of acknowledging that it sounded like a good idea, and let's go that route. And then Paul decided to, well, wait a second, let me go out, let me put it out to bid, and kind of took it back under his control, and then put it out to bid, and lo and behold, some person from, doesn't even live in Lincoln City, was given the contract to do this thing, and the revival that you had as a result of that, that association. I'm pissed, you know? I think it was, I think I had a legitimate thing going on, and it had a lot of value, and it was, it was a better deal than, than what you ended up getting. The contest, to me, over the years, really hadn't changed much. It was kind of the same old thing, have a kayak raffle, have a few people SUP in in kayaks, and a couple of food booths, and that was about it. Well, I thought it was time to boost that, and that's what I wanted to do, and it didn't work out. So I want to give my premature pitch for next year, you know? And if, if it's possible, if you could get it established, if you, I don't know if you guys are even going to let it out to, to somebody else to organize or do it yourself this year, but I'd like to throw my hat in the ring if you are going to let it out, because I think I could do a good job.
Thank you.
So, that's it. Thanks.
Do we have any more comments from the citizens, the audience? Okay. Thank you. Unfinished business, Devils Lake Plan.
Getting a little echo on one of these mics here.
Is that mine?
In my, I think maybe mine.
Maybe. Is it better for me to? It's my mic.
Okay.
Such a loud talker.
Right, that's me. Okay.
Voskito over one, this way?
Yeah.
Do that.
No, I don't care.
Okay, so thank you. First item on the Devils Lake Plan is a septic sewer update. I've been talking about this for a while, and it's basically here. The city of Lincoln City has a pre-design report, I think it's just all the mics are kind of echoing. I don't know. Apologize for that. Which is basically the design plan for sewer-ing the lake. It's 117 pages long. I've got a copy, but it's, unfortunately, it's, it's a little bit corrupted. I can't seem to get it moving, and got the file, it needs to be repaired, so I can't really share it with you. But we could, we could venture to get the board copies of that. I did include, just to just prime the, the discussion in the future, a copy of what the draft map looks of that sewer infrastructure, potential sewer infrastructure, covering basically all of Niyatsu, except for those areas that are already sewed. There are, there is a small bit of Niyatsu that is sewed. All the way around Horseshoe Bay, and then basically running along East Devils Lake Road to, and then properties to the lakeside of that. You'll see that those properties upland are not in that. They are in the UGB. Other areas that are not in this are, say, Park Lane, where the KOA is. Much of those properties aren't in the UGB, urban growth boundary. So, you know, this is a draft document, and the city is looking for some feedback on this. So it would probably be good to coalesce some thoughts, if the district has them, to provide comment. The comments that I would provide would, I think, be more of a technical nature. It would not be policy-oriented based, you know, just be the technical side of things. So if there's some policy questions or things that you would want to bring forth, you know, after, you know, a formal review, I think we should do that. So, but it's good news. You know, this is a vital component to, you know, enabling sewer on the lake, not only just from the pre-design perspective, but the financial perspective. And that was really the original goal and requirement to getting this done.
Do you expect that we'll have the report to review soon then?
Well, I'll just have to try to get another copy of it that I can, I don't know if it's in the file, just-
Work.
The link, no, I don't know which link you're talking about.
The one, because I clicked on it, and it, it was doing something when I left the office today, but I never saw it.
Oh, those links, the links above at the top, those go to our webpage.
The one that says view full document online underneath item A, Devils Lake Plan. Is that, is that not the sewer?
That is the Devils Lake Plan.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. And then, so of the, the next links, skipping the, the one that says projects, which is just kind of the general link to the projects page, the sewer and septic link is where I would try to get maybe this posted, but I got to get a better copy, and if not, then-
Does the city have it on their website?
Not that I know of. Yeah. I talked to the Public Works Director, when was their last meeting? Just Monday, I guess. And they haven't set up a formal presentation to council yet, too. So my hope would be that when they did that, if they were to do that, go that route, that, you know, opportunity for, you know, anybody, obviously, board members and staff, might be critical to at least listen to, you know, that presentation, either directly or indirectly, you know, at a later time, and get some of the kind of feedback through that process, too. So.
So Paul, can I ask a question? The, the green dots are vacant lots, and I'm, it seems like there's not that many of them compared to the inventory that we got from Lincoln County.
The, the green dots are existing buildings, aren't they?
It says vacant lot.
Vacant lots, okay.
Something about core area, which I'm not sure what core area means, and it's probably explained in the plan, but I don't know.
Yeah.
Doesn't seem like that many, I mean, just glancing here, I'm looking at probably less than 15.
Oh, so the real, so, yeah, so the key would be, the buildable lands there includes the urban growth boundary, the full urban growth boundary, not, whereas this, the sewer, proposed sewer does not service all of those properties in the urban growth boundary. And most of the growth would be basically, potential growth would be east of East Devils Lake Road up the hill. And those properties are not, this is how I'm understanding it, those are not part of the proposed service area.
So if I live on the, if my address is East Devils Lake Road, and if you're driving north, and I lived on the right-hand side, I am not eligible to get on the sewer?
That would be, yeah, correct. Up until you get all the way to the end, but I think those properties are just the same property overlapping the road, maybe. But there might be some parcels on that east side. If you look at the very kind of north end before Horseshoe Bay-
Yeah, I see where it cuts over a little bit.
Yeah.
It, okay. That seems a little weird to me.
Well, yeah, I mean, that's kind of where maybe, you know, your inputs are collective or individually, you know, would be, could be part of that process. You know, like I said, this is a draft. I think that is probably the, the big policy question that sits out there.
And down here in the far south end, it looks like they do cross East Devils Lake Road again, for some reason.
Just that, yeah, it looks like that last property there. And like I said, it might be that that's all one ownership, too. There might be some, it might just be the parcel, I don't know. Too, definitely too small for me to pick that out.
That's not one, there is two houses there, but not the same as across the street.
Do you know, Paul, is their plan capable, the proposed sewer that they're going to place here on East Devils Lake Road, is it capable of taking on a lot more than what's shown here? Is that the plan to put?
I don't have a clear-cut answer for you on that, because when I've been, I haven't had enough time to go through the whole doc. I have a hard time even printing it. I had to print it like page by page, and the document's been corrupted, and I haven't been able to really sit down and spend much time with it.
All right.
So, but yeah, that's, that's, that's a really vital question, and that would be, we can find that out.
Okay. Thank you. No, Brian's not, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry, just one more question. You mentioned that there, there possibly going to be a workshop?
Well, so I anticipate that they'd bring it to council. Whether, whether they would do that in a workshop or, or, I don't know. There was no clear indication on Monday as to how that would go forward. They are looking for feedback.
Because, I mean, I think the Neighborhood Association would probably be pretty interested in seeing this, and I would hope that there would be opportunity for, you know, public comment, other than in a city council meeting, to discuss what, what the plan is without having to read 170 of engineering speak, probably, that I won't understand.
Right. No, it's, it's a, you know, the public input would, I think, be valued, you know, and how the city would go about facilitating that, I don't know. But that, I was, I would hope that it would at least be, you know, planning or city council workshop, or at least a presentation we're going to expect.
Well, if you get the opportunity to share that message, I think it's really important that it's something that can be done with community members, especially the Neighborhood Association, and, and anybody else that's interested outside of the boundary, to have a PowerPoint presentation in terms to understand what's going on, because I, I haven't read the document yet, but I can almost guarantee you that I'm not going to get it. And so I'm assuming the average homeowner is not going to take the time to read 117 pages.
Well, yeah, and synopsis would be appropriate for all audiences, I think. I would welcome a synopsis.
Yeah.
I think all of us would. So I can-
The opportunity to share that message.
Give that feedback. That's certainly feedback we can provide.
Alone on that sediment, maybe I am.
All right. Your finance meeting, Paul, with Chase Park Grants?
Yeah, so I, I put this in just, just to mention it, you know, I know that Brian's not here tonight, and so I kind of want, you know, the opportunity to either have him, you know, get his feedback and such. But the, basically, and I think he did, I think he sent you all an email earlier, maybe yesterday, relative to some of his comments for the night's meeting. But basically, this was a meeting that the city set up with Chase Park Grants, and we kind of dovetailed on to the idea of, you know, maybe they could research funding opportunities for septic, or excuse me, for aeration along with the sewer-ing. And so they were willing to entertain that and provided a, basically, two options. One, basically, the three options, no, no aeration, the sewer one, which was 22.5, and that's the one for the city. And then basically add on $8,500 more to add an aeration sewer, and then an aeration standalone, I think, was $17,000. And those aren't in here, I apologize, because this was, came later, I think, after the time this got put together, or just to get the edits in here. So, but there is an opportunity for the district, if they should so want, to meet with Chase Park Grants. Sent you all an email, I think, last week to that effect. So if there's some interest, we could try to put one together. And then you could have like a special meeting to, to get detailed information from the horse's mouth, effectively, you know, not, not filtered either through myself and/or Brian from a previous meeting. So that's kind of on, you know, my question to you.
I guess my question, so is, is their program to finance the aeration, the total aeration project then? Is that what, what they've done, similar projects in the past?
No, that's not their focus, no. I mean, aeration's a pretty niche market, I think.
Right, I know that.
But, you know, I think they got their start in parks and recs departments, maybe, you know, funding, you know, football field for a community, I don't know, something like that. So the, you know, I, I think the, the key is, is that, you know, if you want to further investigate this, you know, there's an opportunity to do this directly.
Okay.
You know, which it would be, I think, preferable, you know? Because I'm, I'm not pitching it to you.
Right.
They obviously would be, so you'd want to have that lens filter, but at least you would, you would be able to ask all the questions and get them answered, you know?
Well, I think that, I mean, my opinion is, I think we ought to at least hear what they have to say and look at all options.
Okay.
Is the city willing to let us piggyback on that for the reduced rate?
Well, it, it seems like that, that would be a viable option, yes.
I guess it seems, I mean, maybe it's all the same work, no matter what the, the funding number is, but 22.5 to 17 is not very much different for a very different funding. I mean, we're looking for a million bucks, give or take, I don't know, and they're looking for a whole lot more than that. It seems like it would be quite a bit less expensive.
Well, they're looking for probably anywhere between three and six million, 2.5 even. So we might be looking at, like you said, a million for sure, potentially, half million to two, to 1.9 is kind of where. So they're fairly similar. I think the reality is, is that they're different in, in, sewer's a much different thing than a, in like aeration program.
Right.
But, you know, I, I think, you know, she confidently said that, you know, she wouldn't have provided you a strategic funding plan proposal if she didn't think that there were funding strategies out there that could meet your needs.
Okay. Go ahead, Bill.
Is this something that you would not be able to implement, grant?
So grant research is something that I would certainly embark to implement on your behalf, and I think that there are, you know, specialists that do things relatively more efficiently, and so that would be kind of the thing to consider. You know, there's a lot of work that goes into, researching grants is, is actually pretty intense, but it's certainly something I've done a little of.
Well, I think if the, the city doesn't have the, to fund the sewer, oh yeah, I say it bad, that we should probably think about, if we're going to really find the most available funding options to, to at least look at it.
If they can find $16,000 for us, we're ahead of the game.
Yeah. Yeah, and, you know, it's, it's no guarantee that you will get funded, it's just a strategy. And so you would have, you know, costs that wouldn't necessarily manifest into anything. I mean, it's not actually applying either. It's not actually applying for those funds, it's just the strategy. So that's another-
So who applies?
You're considered. We would, or we would have someone apply on our behalf. We would do, so, yeah, I mean, it is, it isn't, it isn't like this person would go out, find the grants, and apply for them.
But they give you a roadmap of-
Yeah.
Has successfully been applied for and, and the strategy.
And the timing for those, and, and, yeah. And a review, I think, if, if I look at the, what the offering said, and again, if we got this directly from Tia, then it wouldn't be so, you know?
Sure. So does she have some dates that she's willing to come and meet with us?
Yeah, and I, I don't have my email printed, that I sent those in, unfortunately. It was, she's basically available fairly regularly. She lives in Colorado, but she's doing work with the city of Newport extensively, and so she's been on the coast almost every two weeks.
Oh, okay.
So it's pretty, there's a lot of opportunity. There, they didn't align with your meeting schedule, so it would be a special meeting that you can hold at the college and, you know, open up, invite the public to attend and that sort of thing.
Great.
But, so, yeah, so we could put those dates back out as options, if you're interested in, and she would certainly be interested in meeting with you.
Sounds good.
Yeah, thank you.
Anything else on voyage lake LID? So save our shorelines, or continue on?
Yeah, well, just, you know, I think there's a public comment that kind of touched on that, and the outcome of meeting with Benai Breth, the baby camp, and some of the ideas that could, could come forward, and actually reached out to the Sandwich Creek Watershed Council Reef Program Coordinator, Graham Clapp. Just pronounced his name, sorry, if I didn't, Graham. And, because they kind of do this kind of work with, with students, and then, I pitched it to him, and he, he entertains the idea of helping facilitate something like this, too. So it would be, you know, good to get something going and hand off and have it, have it run, because, you know, it would definitely be long-term, be held, ran by the camp. I mean, that's their goal. It's their idea is to add a curriculum to their camp, which would include native vegetation. And I was saying, yeah, you know, at the end of the camp, you just put a bunch of plants down at the end of the pier and invite people to come pick them up, and, you know, along with restoring their own shorelines and that sort of thing. So it's, it's, you know, productive meeting. And I think, like I said, with- like you said, with Reef Program Coordinator, that could really help move it along, too.
Well, it's neat that they're interested in engaging, you know, the different stakeholders these days, because they have such a big footprint on the lake, I think they have 12 acres, I believe.
I think it is 12, yeah.
I have a, and maybe this should be under other business, but I was walking to the office today, and a property owner on the, the corner where Hill Road takes off, there's a ditch with a culvert that runs straight over basically to Rock Creek, and it's a dip-down ditch, and it's all grass, and they were out there weed-eating it, and I got looking at it, and it's like, man, this is a perfect spot for a shoreline restoration, because it looks to me like it would be perfect for like a bio-swell type area to be planted there, rather than going down there and weed-eating out the grass and spraying the grass to kill the grass, which runs directly into Rock Creek, and there's a lot of washing of vehicles that goes on at this property. Have you ever talked to them, I'm assuming you know who I'm talking about?
Uh, no, not, I haven't talked to them about that property.
Do you know, do you know the ditch I'm talking about?
I do, I think so, yeah.
That would be a really good idea to, you know, go and say, hey, we'd like to work with you, and see, I mean, if we could get that activity stopped, would be ideal, but short of that, if we could be planting something in that ditch to capture as much as we could before it runs directly over into Rock Creek, which was one of our highest outputs of nutrients themes, I have to believe that that is a pretty major contributor.
Well, we could certainly, property owner, and see what's going on there more directly, and encourage some practices that would help mitigate sediment, which would be carrying nutrients and.
Yeah.
Such like that coming through, so, yeah, we can do that.
Great.
Communications report?
Yeah, so just a few, really, I, I need to touch on approval to, if the district is interested in attending the senior fair, oh, back up one, Mayor Don Williams is going to be at a conference, so we've got some slides that are going to that, touching on our SOS program, one of them, Save Our Shoreline program, but, but the district has attended the senior fair, and it's put on by my family, so I always bring this one to you, there's a bit of it in, spoken about here, it's October 6th from 10 to 4, it's at Chinook Winds, it's attended by mostly senior-aged folks, because that's who the target audience is, and then the locals that put on those booths, and so we've, we've used that as an outreach component, and the cost, discounted cost from 3.35 plus 25 for electricity, minus 100 for 2.60 for the day, if you want to attend, we would put that together for you.
Do you see it as a valuable outreach tool?
I have, and, you know, it's hard to, you know, do that without being biased, but it is, it has been, in fact, the one, the one time when we were seeking support for our grass carp application, we got like 75 signatures from people that live here, and I, you know, you're going to get audience that are not locals, that don't, maybe have never even heard of Devils Lake, which is another opportunity to reach out to, and so, but when, you know, our efforts have been concentrated, the people that are, you know, staffing the Kuanis booth or something, you know, some people are giving the flu shots away, or those, you know, those people are your constituents, you know, they are, they're certainly your constituents, so they, that's often, I think even more so. Each of the last two years, they started a new thing where they kind of do a stamp, and you have to get, you have to go around to six booths and get stamped, and they've given us the opportunity to participate in that again, if we want, at no charge, normally they'd offer it as a, you know, a surcharge, maybe additional, because it, it does bring people to your booth. Now, a lot of those people are going to take a quick look at your booth, get their stamp and move on, because they're trying to get into a drawing, but they're going to come there, so that would be another thing you could consider. But, yeah, it's been a, it's been a pretty impactful day, I think, from a per-person contact.
Okay.
Per hour, yeah.
I think it's a good, that's one of the few things that we actually buy a booth at locally for our company, because it is a lot of local people that want information on lake and trash.
Mm-hmm.
Very good. Do you need a motion, then?
Well, yeah, I would, because of this money, and it's, like I said, I, it's up to you totally to decide this on your own.
Well, I move that Paul go ahead and register for a booth, and accept a booth at the senior fair, October 6th.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, great, thank you.
Vote passes unanimously. Let's see, safety report, I see we're testing our iWash stations, and Midcoast TMDL, anything to report on that?
No, no meetings since your last, so, in the last update, I think, included some timelines, so, for how those meetings are coming forward, so.
East Devils Lake Road?
Yeah, so, you know, we didn't do it, but I thought it would be worth noting, and I put some photographs in there of what that new culvert looks like over East Devils Lake Road, I'm sure most people are aware that that road's open again, and they finished a week early, so congratulations to the contractor and the county, I assume they're going to do some striping still, and that sort of thing, so there may be some activity there, but it is raised, it's a good three feet off of the water from where it was, there's a couple, three photos in our packet there, if people want to see what it looks like to look underneath of it, but, yeah, so, we had a little bit of a rainstorm to give it a test, we didn't get enough rain to really test it out, but come November, we'll, we'll see, and, you know, it's, it's really, and admittedly, to their admission, is a short-term fix to alleviate flooding, and, you know, it floods at the west end of that system, too.
Sometimes, yes.
Sometimes, less so.
I'm interested to see if it will flood more down there now.
Yeah, it, you know, it's, the idea is to, you know, just get water through, but when you're looking at that, that wetland, you know, towards the lake, if that just keeps building up, and if, you know, sediments, you know, keeps trapping, you know, that's, that's where the elevation is going to be controlled, so, you know, I think that it would be the lower spot, so the water would have to go there versus towards the Rock Creek Bridge, so.
Well, it sure looks nice, it's, it's a nice transition, if you didn't know that they had done something there, you would never recognize it, and so, like, it's, they've done a good job.
Yeah, I agree.
And there's already little surface plants growing on the edges there, so it doesn't look like they disturbed the creek too much at all.
Oh, good, right, in, in fact, they, you know, they had to do quite a bit to get in there and do an activity that didn't impact fish and wildlife, and, so that's good to hear, yeah.
Harmful alka blooms?
Yeah, so, we've been trying to get it scheduled together with Dr. Horn, November 12th could tentatively work for him, that will, will hold that date and try to get him there, I think I, you know, provided some information as to why, what might make that not happen, if, if it doesn't happen, we'd, we'd shoot for December meeting, if that would be, make sense to you all. That's, that's about it, on the financing, we've really kind of already talked about that, oh, there's the dates, I did put the dates in here.
Right.
Okay, and I put the, the value, okay, I'm not just losing my mind.
Uh-huh.
Yet, so there's your 8,500 for the add-on, 1,700 for the standalone, possible dates, September 8th through 9th, or the end of September 20th through the 30th, or back on the 5th or 6th of October, which October 6th wouldn't work in the daytime, because we're going to be at the, we're at the senior fair apparently now, so, you know, let's put in evening one there. So, is there one of those that you want to give me some direction on now, I mean, I would definitely just poll you all later through email or something else, too, whatever.
Well, for me, the best would be the 8th or the 9th.
Which is next week.
Next week. I don't know what Brian's situation is, though.
He'll be back, the meeting, or the meeting, the wedding is Monday, I believe, right?
I don't think Tina, she was out of town, because that was our regular meeting.
Yeah, you?
I am out of town on the 10th, I leave the 10th, so I am available the 8th and 9th.
The 28th to the 30th would be best for me, probably.
28th through the 30th, 28th or 30th?
Yeah.
Oh.
Or the end of the month would be better.
Well, an evening meeting I could make, that's going to be a busy time for me, but, no, I'm, I'm starting our project.
Oh, oh.
Yeah.
Um, I am not available the 29th, but I am the 28th.
Why don't I do a doodle poll or something, and we can, if we can get a good doodle poll, and.
Those work really good.
They do work pretty good, they're kind of annoying when people put too many options on them, but.
Get down the list, it's pretty, I mean, it's kind of nice to see that.
Comment on Doodle.
Or whatever.
Okay, so let's do that, and before we move on, are there times that you would look at entertaining that would be better, you know, 3:00 PM in the afternoon, 6:00 PM, 10:00 AM, you know?
I'm pretty, if I'm available, if I'm in town, I'm pretty flexible, but for you, it would be.
It's evening, it would be evening.
Okay.
So if we did, when you're doing your project, would, what, be available?
She'd be available on, she's available on, I was going to bring that up, on the 10th, on the first, on the first.
Okay.
How about you, Bill, what would be your timing preference?
Um, doesn't matter to me.
Okay.
Just let me know, yeah, I'm open.
Thank you. All right, then, we'll doodle that.
Okay, water quality.
Save Our Shoreline's most favorable for everybody to make it.
It's just it's got to be evening for me, if I, if I'm here. Water quality?
Okay, so, let's see here, just for people that don't know, we, we do water quality on Devils Lake, and post that stuff online, and at the kiosks around the lake, Save Our Shoreline, Holmes Road, Dee River, although somebody stole our sign at the Dee River, we found out today.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it's apparently not anywhere, I mean, there's a burn ban, so I don't assume that it got hungered for firewood either, but, yeah, so, you know, things happen, we had some.
What does it say? What, what's the sign?
It's, it's, it's just the post, it's just one post, and it has our, you know, our blue and yellow kind of metal frames on it, and then the plastic things that hold the, the signs, you know, it's just like our, anyway, so, it's at the end of our season, so we'll have to just deal with that, I think, in the upcoming year, but that was random.
Is that the signs that we talked about, replacing it the last time?
No, no.
Okay.
Yeah, no, these are just water quality kiosks, and the signs can either be on a full kiosk, and this one just happens to be a standalone on a four-by-four post, just.
The Dee River Wayside?
At Hosteller Park.
Oh, at Hosteller, okay.
Yeah, yeah, and we do have one at the Dee River Wayside, which we'll have to get removed, too, because that's a temporary one that sits out in the sand, and the parks let us put it out there, it's, it's on the sand near the Dee River, so once you walk out on the sand, and you hang it right towards the river, you'll see it, and they, we use that spot because it's like, okay, that's water from the, the lake, not ocean water, and they didn't, they don't want the confusion for, for their, you know, people that are visiting, so, so we have that going on, which is random, and we do get a little vandalism on some of those signs here and there, they break, break the plastic and such, but overall, for the cost investment, it's been a pretty good way to, to, to get that information out there. On the, on the water quality side, we did monitor Devils Lake for the most likely toxin based on the cyanobacteria that are present in the lake, and, and I think it's showing, and it's been showing here through our meeting, it's online, toxins are certainly there, but still low, below recreational standards, which is good, there are, there's a heck of a lot of cyanobacteria out there on the lake, though, all mostly blown up to the north end now because of the big storms, so, you know, we're not testing everybody's dock in front of everyone's house, or every canal, and in fact, the canals, Horseshoe Bay, and the other, some of the other dredged areas tend to collect stuff, and that is certainly the case, where stuff gets blown in and it doesn't wash out, it doesn't, there's nothing windwise to, to blow that out, so, that, the concentrations there could be considerably higher, even though often we do get a sample that's got a lot of cyanobacteria in it, K Street, Niyatsu was our highest one, it had a ton of, ton of stuff there, but not to a toxic level for human recreational use. Now, pets are another story, and drive that point home, because, you know, pets, you know, they get in the water, they drink a lot of water, they tend to get it on their fur, and then they clean themselves, and so they're actually filtering it, and potentially bringing it in, and so, so that's a, a much different scenario, and the thresholds for recreational pet activity are five-fold less than the drinking water standard for human drinking water, so, very conservative value, so if it's green, I think your pet should probably find a different place to, to go chasing, you know, frisbees or whatever, and certainly drinking that water, it's, it's certainly a high risk for your, for your pet, and children, of course, too, are, you know, are just more susceptible, so, just from a user, user standpoint. Okay, so we have, following up on this, we have acquired additional toxin monitoring capacity, which the district invested in, so that's good, and we use that based on, you know, need, conducted some storm sampling with the weather, we thought we'd get out and get some additional samples associated with some of your inflows, major inflows, Rock Creek, you mentioned Thompson Creek, Niyatsu Creek, which goes into Horseshoe Bay, some lake surrogates, too, basically a lake sample, or sample site from the shoreline that's more or less lake water, you can get out as far as you can, we use the campground often, and then, as a data sharing thing, just announcement here, just a reminder that you can get all this information into your smartphone now, too, mobile-friendly emails that you get, also our website's mobile-friendly, and then also, Elizabeth put a new kiosk at the college, so, since we have that open house that we were part of, the Orient Coast Community College, where our offices, we thought we should dress up our look a little bit, and, and Elizabeth certainly did that with part of our bulletin boards down there, our offices have the water quality information, too, and it says, yeah, we've monitored this here at the college, room 217, I think it is upstairs, so just to get that information out there to the people, so that they can know that the water's being monitored, but also come visit and, and learn about it, too, and that's part of our commitment to the college, is that if people want to come and see that water quality monitoring, they can do that and see that firsthand, so, of course, our season's now ending, typically Memorial Day to Labor Day is when our monitoring window are, and, so we'll really be phasing out the water quality monitoring, certainly the bacteria monitoring program will, will be coming to a halt, which is a weekly monitoring program, so, yeah.
Don't we typically use the monitoring, though, to, to write the story for our problem that's ongoing?
Yes, so, what, what the direction we had from the, the big bloom in 2014 was, was to, you know, entertain harmful alka bloom monitoring specifically year-round, so that if there is a bloom, which currently we do obviously have a bloom, we will at least venture to monitor, it'll probably be on a lesser scale, you know, unless you direct me to stay out there every week, I can certainly do that, but we could go down maybe every two weeks, and then certainly when the bloom dissipates, we, we kind of just call off, and, you know, it doesn't make much sense, so.
Yeah, tell me why that doesn't make sense, because I, I'm seeing that we're missing, if we only test for those things during this time of year, in fact, we're missing three-quarters of the year of a story that we need to process, we need, we needed some kind of, something to tell us. of a story that we need to process, we need, we need some kind of, something to tell us what direction we need to go in.
Yeah, so, um, the, the main water quality monitoring program that we're speaking about, though, is just this recreational water quality monitoring, um, so it's been targeted during the peak time of year is, is why, is the only thing. Now, I mean, you're right, if, um, we want more information bacterial-wise, or harmful agal bloom-wise or otherwise, about winter flows...
Our phospho- phosphorus nitrate levels.
And nutrients, yeah.
And nutrients, so we can, we need to get on the move.
Yeah, so, you know, with that, we certainly can add more monitoring through the winter, you know, if that's the direction, and, uh...
It's going to be.
I think that, I, I agree with Bill, because, um, I'm looking back on, from our goal setting, and I know we're going to talk about that, but, one of the things that, that I had asked for and that other people had mentioned was that we need to quantify all sources of nitrogen and phosphorus feeds into the lake, and, and that would help us know whether we have external loading or internal loading, and I'm assuming that in the wintertime, we have heavier external loading, and the summertime, we have heavier internal loading, I'm assuming, but do we have data to show us that?
Right, right, yeah, so...
Exactly what Bill is saying would give us that type of data that we would need to, you know, because I want to know where the low-hanging fruit are that we can go after to reduce those, whether it's internal or external.
Great, yeah, we can do that, we can, um, you know, basically, your monitoring budget will sustain some additional monitoring in the short term, and we can come back and look at that, where you may need to up that, you know, um, you know, you've got monitoring dollars that are effectively, um, aimed at being spent in May and June in your current fiscal year budget, so you can tap into those in the near term, and then say, if those are becoming low, and you still want to have a recreational monitoring program come May and June, then we can, we can look at that and make an adjustment if necessary.
And you and I, when we had our conversation, I believe it was last week, we talked about, we've got a lot of historical data on phosphorus and nitrogen, and, um, we have last May, you just did some this last week, um, if we had maybe even once a month or something through the winter, it doesn't have to be extensive, but if we, and even just a few sites, just to give us some, some data points as we go through the winter and experience those highs, or potential highs after storms and stuff, I think that's what we're looking for.
And, that's great, and we'll do that, and just as an aside, one of the other things that we did in this last storm sampling is we actually did some flow measurements, too, uh, which is critical for determining the loading, because concentration's one thing, but it's really like, you know, how many buckets of that concentration are coming in, um, and so we've, uh, got some strategies to get some, uh, sampling, you know, done, that we, what we completed, uh, last week, um, as well, which we could bring out as well, and so, we'll couple those, because those are kind of critical.
So those will probably be ready for next meeting, then, the, the results of what we just...
You know, they, maybe, the lab that we sent them to isn't, um, a commercial lab, so it's, it's like, we get them to them, and then they analyze them at kind of their leisure, in a sense, um, it's at Oregon State University. So, you know, we don't, we don't get to dictate the timeframe, but, um...
Yeah, I, I just think that if we had, we don't need to do 11 sites, um, if we just picked three or four, and we could cut down our budget, you know, if it's $29 or whatever it costs per sample, um, that, instead of doing 11, if we did half or even four sites at critical places, then we at least have a picture of what's taking place there, um, that would give us more information.
Yeah, you know, your major tributaries, um, the lake itself, and then the Dee River and Outfall is probably your, you know, for looking at those large flows now, um, that'll get you a sense as to what's coming out of those flows, you know, it doesn't, it doesn't really reach the understanding of what's just migrating to the lake, though, through the groundwater, that's a pretty hard one to, to...
Right, but the, the one in the...
But if the phosphorus is increasing in those spots, we can assume that the whole lake is increasing.
Yeah.
Phosphorus load.
It's getting loading there, yeah, and likely going to the sediment, and then often what happens is the, um, you know, the, the use of that, those nutrients are, in the summertime, when, when they're, the cyanobacteria are trying to grow, the sun's out, and so, they'll pull them out of the sediment, and, and while you still may be getting, you know, nutrients coming in, the fact that they can just tap into that sediment base is, is, is pretty critical.
So, we had a conversation in your office about bacteria, and good bacteria, and bad bacteria, and so on and so forth, and, and with regards to aeration, because at one time, I, I think it was John Fonseca, mentioned, you know, that we may want to add bacteria in, and would, would that make sense to do in the wintertime, to add in that bacteria?
I...
Reduce the phosphorus before summertime comes up, or it, I mean, I, I don't quite understand, I mean, I understand balances, but I don't understand...
Um, I've never had anybody, um, you know, non-industry folks really suggest that supplementing bacteria is either necessary or even beneficial, so, um, it wouldn't be my recommendation to add bacteria to the system. Now, the augmentation that can, can, can occur is very short-term and very short-lived, but would require oxygen to be serving those bacteria.
Right.
And so, um, these are naturally occurring bacteria, and so if you had, um, for example, a wastewater treatment plant, um, if you got a toxic spill into a wastewater treatment plant, and you killed all your good bacteria, you would want to inoculate with, like, a good batch of good bacteria again to get it going, because you're treating, you know, 300, or 3 million gallons a day, or whatever's running through your system, and you wouldn't want that downtime, but if you didn't inoculate, and you got your air up, and you got rid of the toxic that killed all the bacteria, they're going to grow back, they're going to self-populate, they're out there, and same, same is true for the lake, and people's septic systems, they're in their, they're in their systems, it's, it's just getting rid of what's not allowing them to reproduce, and that may be oxygen, or...
Um, creating a different ratio of that is not beneficial.
It's, I've, no, I would not recommend adding bacteria.
Probably not in the, in the long run, maybe have some real short-term positive effects, but for the length of time, I, I think, I think that that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Elizabeth, I ask you to give a little summary of your internship, see if you put that together.
Hello?
Are you, are you only used to karaoke mic?
Yeah. No, okay, so my summary here, um, in my report, you can find it online, it's a little bit more wordy than what I'm going to give you here, but, um, some things that I've done throughout my internship, I'll get to the summary, sorry, uh, is, um, attend the Sam and Drift Creek Watershed Council and U.S. Forest Service tech teams, um, and I haven't mentioned that in my report before, but I think those are really beneficial, and I think they're a great place for camaraderie, and, you know, inspiration for different things, like, they are way more involved in grant-writing and things like that, and so they're great resources, too, um, throughout this process, I know, and Graham is there, too, and he was mentioned in the SOS project with Ben Ibrith, but, um, my time here at Dulid, uh, as it's fondly called, um, it's taught me a lot of lab techniques and lab services, and the skills that I learned there have been invaluable, because I knew some of them coming in just from chemistry classes and things like that, but being able to implement them weekly, and then share that information with the public has been really beneficial as well, um, and then seeing how this works, you know, being in the meetings and getting a hands-on experience with that is something that is so unique with this internship that I, I personally haven't seen in very many other internships, um, and it was a very attractive part of this, you know, advertisement as it was going out to students, um, because you do get to see how the inner workings work, and you need the direct contact with the people, and how everything is dealt with, so...
So, so, you're going to come back and, or you're going out for a, a public job that has a lot of, uh, interaction and political aspects to it, too?
Yeah, maybe, I still have another year in school, so, um, it's not as scary as, you know, people make it seem, being here, but, uh, small-town Lincoln City, it's home, too, but, um, yeah, I'm, right now, I don't know what I am going to do, I'm going to Hatfield in the fall, but, uh, yeah, this is a great thing to have in my background.
Great, we're glad that you were here this, this year, thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Elizabeth.
And this is my last meeting, so, thank you all for having me.
Very good. All right, brings us to goal prioritization. Looks like Paul put together a summary of the different goals that we've talked about, um, and, now that, again, you know, Brian sent an email around, but probably as far as, as we look through these, I'll, I'll go ahead and read through them that we put together. Develop and finance, construct, operate, and maintain a lake-wide aeration system for harmful agal bloom abatement, uh, goal number two, draft. Forward the septic tank revitalization program by first developing a volunteer inspection program with Lincoln County, followed by a mandatory inspection program, including the city of Lincoln City as a partner. Number three, reduce nutrient loading to Devil's Lake on, from onsite septic systems by supporting extension of a cost-effective sewer around the watershed by a means in which, which does not enable detrimental development. Number four, further engage stakeholders throughout, through, excuse me, through outreach to associations and community, community groups, through the formation of volunteer committees, including water quality monitoring, recreation and promotion, and shoreline restoration. Number five, through a removal fill permit obtained by the district and implemented by volunteers, dredge the lake in front of Hosteller Park near the Dee River, re-establishing recreational opportunities in this historic area. Number six, re-energize the grass carp application with Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife as possible means of vegetation man- management. Number seven, amend the Devil's Lake plan to reflect the current priorities of the district and provide updates to the previous version. Number eight, quantify sources of nutrients to Devil's Lake. Number nine, institute a daily log approach to quantify staff time and efforts dedicated to pursuing and accomplishing the district priorities. And number 10, develop timelines and measurable benchmarks to meet district priorities. Those were the 10 summarized from the last meeting, as well as then Paul and I sat down last week and talked about that. Were there additions or omissions that we should add to that, that, at least as a starting point? David, I know you weren't here, and so...
Well, I guess it's just a, it's more of a, I think the points are good, you know, it's more around, you know, what things can we run in parallel, I mean, I don't want, you know, when I, when I look at, you know, kind of the order, it, you know, it's, you know, nutrients in Devil's Lake, you know, I'd like that, you know, a little bit higher on the list, but if it's something that we're actively working on during the course of the year, I think that's, that's fine, right? So as long as we're not biting off more than we can chew with the staff that we have, and we can, you know, kind of work on these, that, that's great, you know?
Well, I think, like, the, number eight, the quantify source of nutrients to Devil's Lake, that's similar to what we were just talking about.
It is what we're talking about, right?
That was mine. So, do, I kind of went through and renumbered these priority-wise, is that what we are supposed to do?
We could, that's, that's fine. I don't know, I don't honestly know that this is, we have to, that these numbers have to stay where they are, and I think, similar to what David said, um, is that I think we need to narrow our scope, um, I, I feel like we've been too thin, and, and so if we can focus on, you know, three or four, and do something with three or four, then we're better ahead than having 10, and...
I agree.
Slowly prodding through the process, um, that's, that's my opinion.
I mean, if I, if I pick three, it's, you know, to me, it's the same kind of three we've been working on, maybe with some different focal areas, which is, you know, nutrient abatement, you know, the aeration, and, you know, continuing pushing forward with vegetation management, knowing what we want to do there. You know, to me, Devil's Lake plan is going to fall in place when we establish what, you know, what the priorities are and what we want to do, I mean, it's, it's obvious that something has to, you know, update in the things that, you know, what we're doing in our statements to the public in terms of, and what our direction is, so, and those are kind of, they're, they're, they're going to happen either way, so...
I guess the way I look at it is, A, as a new board member, I, um, I'm kind of hands-on, and I want to know what's going on, and, and like Kent said, I feel like there is a whole lot of moving parts that I, and I don't even know some of the things we're doing, and when I say "we," I, I'm referring to staff, and I guess if I'm Paul, I would like some direction from us on, you know, when I show up at the office in the morning, these are the things, the priorities, and obviously, there's things that are not on this list that he has to do managerially, whether it's budgets, or, um...
Roles and responsibility, Cliff.
Yeah, but, you know, I think that, um, that it's our job to give him direction on, on what those top two or three things should be, and if, you know, number seven on the list shouldn't be taking up, you know, a quarter of his day, one, two, and three are not, you know, rolling and done with what you can get done on him for the time being, and I realize that, you know, some of the things that we're working on are, you know, hurry up and wait, there's, you know, a lot of work get done, you send it off, you wait, so obviously, there's things, we don't want one thing that you're working on, but I also think that 10 things is, you know, I, I have a hard time wrapping around it, you've been doing this a while, so, you know, maybe you're better at keeping all those plates spinning and, you know, being effective, but I know in my business, I can't do that, you know, I have to have a pile over there that I'll get to when this pile gets smaller, so, I, how do you feel about that?
I, I think you're absolutely right, clear direction and priorities coming from the board is favorable, you know, and so, um, if you can narrow it down to three, I mean, absolutely, and that's, that's, that makes it easier to, but, you know, any of the 10, and like you said, the, the unknown others or unspoken others have to, you know, get done, and so, like, our audit, you know, that's, it's going to be a few weeks of work in the next weeks.
That's the word I was looking for, is audit.
Yeah, you know, and that, that one's, you know, got to happen now, and...
Right.
And, you know, once we get to January, then you start worrying about the budget, and like you said, those are, those are things, and, um, so, you know, what we don't have listed on here is just like, you know, a lot of those things, but those have been kind of laid out in, in the budget as far as activities that the district does embark in, uh, and so I think it's, it's known, there's some, you know, but, yeah, top three, top seven, top 10?
Well, so some of them, I, you know, I think are, are the changes in, in management style, and... You can interrupt me any second here, Karen, but the first thing I would like to see is the daily log approach, and we've talked about that, and I know you asked us to, you know, maybe talk about in executive session.
Uh, no, I just, I didn't mention that.
And we talked about it in the workshop, and we haven't really brought it up then, but, institute a daily log approach to quantify staff time and efforts dedicated to pursuing and accomplishing district priorities, um, that would be huge for me, and I know that it takes some of your time during the day, but, but for myself as a board member and the community at large that, that I answer to, I, I think it would be really beneficial, and then, you know, then we can see that he's working on the top three priorities we gave him, his plate is full, or he's doing the audit, so none of that stuff's getting worked on, you know, this week, what, I mean, I think it would be a good communication tool, a good, um, learning tool for me... good learning tool for me, you know, to get up to speed on, on the projects that we do. Because just like I said, I don't have a firm handle on all the things that we're involved in. And not that I should know, you know, every single little thing you're doing every minute of the day, but I do want to have a good idea of, hey, Thursdays, he's in the lake monitoring. On this day, he goes to, you know, and maybe, I don't know if you go to the same meetings as Betsy does, but, you know, he's at Sam and Drift Creek Watershed meeting, or whatever, sewer meetings with the city.
Yeah. Yeah, and it always is a kind of cyclical nature as far as
Sure.
You know, like basically, what is it, end of this last year, the agreement was like, okay, let's just stop doing all these like daily logs because they're just, you know, using up a lot of staff time.
You had an experienced board that knew...
Exactly. And that's what I mean, it's always just kind of up and down. So, you know, it might be...
I'm not asking for it forever.
So, so Tina? My highlights. Here's some of the things that are coming. Just so that we can have bites into it. And, you know, I think we did that for maybe a year.
We've done it for a couple of years.
And then we, and then we kind of, as everybody came up to speed, we kind of just backed off to, you know, once a week and just get the highlights from the week. And the highlights were things that are coming the next week, so.
And, and some of the detail that we provided in that to try to just, you know, make it kind of firm as to what that would entail. Like, so like, the first time I talked about the water quality monitoring, I got very detailed and said, you know, this takes X the number of hours or whatever. And then so the next week that you would see, it would just say water quality monitoring.
Sure.
And, you know, it'd be evident that that's, you know, okay, well, that's, you've got to mentally put that much time kind of associated with it. And, and so like, as soon as we got to that level, then the, it becomes more bullet pointy. And that's quicker and more efficient for me, if it, if it communicates what, what needs to be communicated.
Well, like, for me, I, I mean, I, I know, I see you out there when you're
We have a flag.
I see you. And so I could look at my watch and say, hello, he's out doing that, but I really don't know how long that takes. And I know you do it on a consistent basis, same time every week. And then how much time do you spend in the lab doing the, the science behind it? But, you know, do you go to a city council meeting and, on sewer? And do you sit there through the meeting and then just report to us? Or do you testify? What, I'd like to know what, if you attend a meeting, what's your purpose? What's the outcome? What's, what's, what's the positive for us? What's the district get out of it? And again, I think that's, that's our way of saying, hey, now, we need to, I think, and you would say this too, you're probably spread too thin. You're trying to do too much out there. And at, at times, I'm sure you feel that way. But if we know what you're doing and the reasons behind it, then, you know, it's, it's just good for you, it's good for us too.
Yeah. I mean, this is, you know, you're goal setting, and this is your goal. If it's, you say yes, this is what we'll do, so.
Well, that's my number one. So, and...
That should be it.
You don't think that's a goal?
That's not really a goal.
I don't even think it's a goal, but I, it's something that I would really like to see, let's put it that way. And I, we've talked about it now for almost 90 days. And I, so...
It's a direction from the board. What we're asking is that if you would do that for us.
And I'm going to leave it up to you and Ken to develop what it looks like. And I'd be happy to be involved with that if you'd like. I don't think we need to do that here.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think so either.
Okay. So do we, I know you wanted, you know, board okay with that. Do you want a motion?
I just wanted your consensus, you know? I, I just wanted to make it clear that, you know, what, what's entailed, you know, we talked about that. You had 15 minutes to somebody's day, you times that by a year, it's eight days.
Right.
It's eight days of work.
But it's a valuable eight.
And, and that's just it. That's, that's an arguable thing. That's worth eight days? Maybe it's worth 15 days, 30 days. But at some point, it probably isn't. And so just understanding that, I think is key.
I get that.
Yeah.
Is there any way we could have a meeting to go over the actual priorities and goals?
Do we, do you need to, do you think that we...
Meeting time so that Brian can be involved and we can all interact?
I guess what, what I would say is that if we want to, if, if we're pretty much happy with here, maybe what we do is at the next, kind of as directors come back and for two, number three, number five.
That's what we're supposed to do this meeting.
Right. And if you want to Brian. Then let's just do it in October.
But Ken's not going to be here.
Well, we, we can, we can talk about that if we, if we can. And whether, whether we change the meeting date or not, if we, if we do that, then I'll make sure to get it. And if that's, if that's...
Well, I think without, I mean, without spending a lot of time, Bill, and, and I agree that that would be really beneficial. But, so we leave here tonight knowing, you know, a, a clear direction so that, you know, at least we're all on the same page, and Paul can feel like he's on the same page with us, is the, the aeration system obviously has to be really high on the priority list because we are going down that road. And so, you know, I think that should be up there. If, if number nine is not a goal, then the aeration system should be priority number one. Priority number two for me would be the quantify sources of nutrients and, along with what you said earlier, of getting some year-round monitoring to know
Assistant.
external and internal loading of those. And then my number three would be that, the stakeholders through the committees and community groups to help with things like monitoring. You know, it, yeah, we still have to pay for the cost of the test, but we don't need staff time necessarily to do that if we have a volunteer committee out there to do it. And same with the sewer and septic. I think it would be really beneficial to have a stakeholder group that worked just on sewer and septic. And a stakeholder group that worked on promotion and recreation. And so I, I'd like to see some effort put into that, and whether that comes from us or you, vice versa, what that looks like. I know you sent us some stuff on public meetings, stuff for those committees. And so help setting those up of the, just the bare bones of what those need to look like, and advertising for those and stuff would be really beneficial. Because then we could actually start engaging these people that come every month. And many more than I know are out there watching that are, are really highly engaged in the lake and would love to be put to work.
Well, shall we, shall we come back next time with, include Brian, make sure that he agrees with everything, and then have a, a good discussion on this?
So maybe you could send this...
I think we're close here.
Yeah.
Just establishing. And I don't think that any of the eight that are remaining are things that we need to disregard and...
Well, I don't think number 10's a, a goal. I think, I think that should be the same kind of thing as a staff request, when we establish, you know, identifying nutrient source.
Should have number 10 attached to it.
Right, right. No, that's why I said eight. Because the last two are really, are, are not goals. And, but the other eight that are remaining are things that we should be spending time on. We need to, just like Paul sent out, we, to do a pre-permit meeting with the state and federal agencies and stuff coming up. I think we need to move forward with that as sooner than possi, than later.
That one's coming up because I've got a date already, so.
Right, October 21st, right?
Whether or not you want me to move forward on it, I am. It's, I think it is October 21st, yeah.
I would like to attend that meeting with you. I, I meant to reply to your email today.
Great.
So if you could send me time and location on that, that would be great.
And I've been to one of those before, so, do you know if it's going to be in Port- you said it, was it in Portland?
Be in Portland at the Army Corps office.
Okay.
Downtown.
Go with that, Ken. Tina, I can go.
Okay, that'd be great.
Yeah, it's a, it's a Wednesday. Just think about that. Great. Okay, so do you need something from me to help assist your next discussion? I mean, you've got your top eight now.
Can you send out an email to all of us so Brian understands the, the task that we have?
Okay.
Of, here's the things and, and the board
Prioritize or
Is prioritizing, come prepared to the next meeting to discuss, you know, your priorities.
Perfect.
Homework.
Okay. Easy homework. That's good. I like that.
Well, I, I think that all of these are good things to vote, to spend our time on. And I think that as we look at prioritizing and such, we can accomplish these things too.
Great.
D River dredging.
Okay, so currently identified as goal, or priority number, X or whatever. So thanks, I put in here, thanks Nathan for, Nathan Knott, for volunteering his commitment to dredge the area what is now known as Hosteller Park. We talked about this a little bit before. So the district would be seeking to get this permit to allow that. And that's pre-application meeting, basically helps set the groundwork for that. It helps identify things that we would have to do, things that would, would, you know, just how to, how to approach it. And it's a, it's meant so that when you do apply, it's, you're not applying to a black box, and, and the black box is, gobbles it up and spits it back with a no, or, you know, so, or a yes. So it just helps to, help you build your application. So that's going to be, the date that they ended up offering was the October, I guess, I think you said 21st, 1:00 PM, up in Portland.
I'd like to add a little something that we discussed. And when Paul and I met last week, we talked about the permit process and such. And my suggestion is, since my landscape architect, Liza, I don't even know how to pronounce her last name. Can, can you help me out there? Ely, thank you, thank you. Ely, she got my permit through the first time. And my suggestion would be that we approach her, and after Paul puts together the, the permit, that she review it, and we pay her to, as a consultant, to make any kind of review and, and maybe changes, and before it goes to, and to be submitted. So that would be my suggestion, is that we at least approach her. And I don't think it would cost the district very much, but it may be great benefits to have somebody else look at it too.
Yeah, I think that's great.
Great. We'll do that then. I'll, I'll speak with her about that.
Thank you.
Okay. Beaver Deceiver.
All right. Well, we have a new agenda item here, new business item. It's Beaver Deceiver, and Elizabeth has got a little presentation for you to end the day and end her internship, so I'm just going to turn it over to her.
Is this a picture of a duck, Elizabeth?
Yeah.
UFO folks got a lot of...
Joke.
Oh, yeah.
I know.
Is this thing on? So, a couple of weeks ago, on August 25th, we installed a couple beaver deceivers out on the Outto Creek. I don't know if you guys are interested, but some beaver background is that they're not just nuisances in our backyard. They provide wetland areas and many other habitats for animals that are quickly going extinct and, you know, are niche areas that are going away with the loss of our water. Some tree cutting can actually promote growth in different types of trees. Another thing about beavers is that you might see a lot of lodges, but it's usually just one family. So if you think you have a lot of beavers around your area, it could just be one family. And then they act as a filtration system for lakes. I might be a little close, sorry. And so they're good. So beaver deceivers
Filtration system.
Okay, so in the wetlands, they dam up the water, and it allows the stream to sit there for longer. So
Wetland acts as a filtration.
Yeah, sorry, the, it creates a filtration.
When exactly do they filter?
Yeah. So beaver receiver is built so that the beaver doesn't build their dam in bad places for us, because they can cause a lot of harm to our health and our property and things like that. So there's a lot of different kinds. We built one similar to the one on the right. And so this is the site. So we have our culvert here going under East Devil's Lake Road, and a V-shaped gate out in front of it. The problem with this was that the beaver built its dam against the gate, which kept it out of the culvert. But the salmon that have started coming up this creek only had this little V to get over the dam and through this gate. So it was two obstacles in one, and it was causing some deaths. And we found, I think I read about six? Okay, yeah. So one that was
Pre or post?
So this is post some. We got the pictures a little bit after. The dam was actually about a foot higher than where the mud is. So it had to jump from where the water is to over the, through the gate and over the dam. And it was pretty difficult for them. So what we did was up about 30 feet on both sides of the Y, we placed, you know, untreated posts, six feet, and it, we ended up using, having to use like 10 feet, or 10-foot ones because there was just so much mud. The lowest point in the middle, and the highest point being where we think the beaver might flood the area. The idea of these is we hope that the beaver will be swimming along or, you know, exploring its area and see that there is stopping branches and things like this. And so it'll be encouraged to build there. It'll be like, that's a great idea, you know? Bridges are already stopped there. So far, the beaver hasn't taken to it, but there hasn't been much activity, any that there has been to rebuild the original dam site by the beaver. We've taken down, we spend maybe like, maybe 20 minutes a week going out there. And when we're just already driving around, we just stop and look at it and make sure that everything, nothing crazy has happened. It hasn't rebuilt its original dam. Improvements that, we haven't seen it build on our deceivers yet. But if it continues to try to build its original dam, we will build another deceiver about, right under that tree line. It's about five feet in front. Maybe that would encourage it even more. But so far, the dam hasn't been completely rebuilt.
So is this on, this is on the creek side, not the lake side?
It's the creek side. Yeah.
And this is the creek that feeds Horseshoe Bay?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you, Elizabeth.
You're welcome.
All right. Does the board have any non-agenda items?
Do you want to talk about meeting date under this?
Yeah, I actually would. I know that at our last meeting, we, there was a request by me to move our October meeting date from the 8th to the 1st. And Paul found out that this room wouldn't be available for that, during that time, or the potential for, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And one of the reasons why, I mean, I, I certainly won't be here if we keep it to the original date, but a second reason for moving it, I'm sure we could, and correct me if I'm wrong, Paul, but could we get our, a meeting room at the college there?
So, yeah, very likely, if it's on a Thursday. The Wednesdays, there's, I think, activity each night. I'm not available on October 1st.
I know that. I, I realize that. But the, I, I still, I was hoping that the board would, would like to hold our meeting still October 1st. And there's a second reason for that. My landscape architect will be in town on, to do our project. We're going to start the upland stuff in September. And on the 1st, we'll start our in-water work on the 1st and the 2nd. And she would like to come and give a PowerPoint presentation about how to go about getting a permit for redoing your waterfront, what kinds of things that they will go ahead and approve, similar to what we went through for our permit process. So she's volunteered to come and do that on the 1st, but she, she wants to coordinate that with the time that she'll be here. So that's a second reason why, if possible.
Is she going to stick around for the weekend?
I, I doubt it. I doubt.
I was just going to say maybe the Saturday morning. I was just going to say, maybe the Saturday morning would be a good time. That way you get your projects done, you can get, have some nice pictures or whatever.
Uh-huh.
It could also be that the board meeting, or like a board onsite visit at your place, while you're, while you're doing the work. I don't know if that's something we can or can't do.
You could organize a field trip for the board, I believe, as long as it's just information, there's no data, information sharing around between the board members. It's a pretty difficult thing. Obviously, the better thing is to have it so that the public can always attend. You could consider it like a training, though, if it was, that was the intent and that was a scope, then you could do that. But, you know, if the intent is, and I think it is, to provide more information, not just to the board, but to the public, it'd be great to get her on TV.
We can record...
And that would be this building.
...presentation at Community College and have it put on Channel 4 at a later date, right?
We can, is that your question?
Yeah, it doesn't have to be live, like through this building.
I don't think we have the equipment.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if we're that skilled. I think, I don't know how their system is now, I don't know if that's a possibility, honestly.
So what dates were available here, Paul?
Um...
People here?
No.
They're having a meeting that may...
Yeah, basically, they're, they're having a planning commission and city council meeting here that day, and so they can't make this meeting available by your 6 o'clock meeting. So...
What about midday on Friday? Is that a possibility?
Their, no, their meeting is...
They're still doing their...
It's mid-afternoon is their meeting start.
We'll be working on our project.
Well, yeah.
I guess, I guess I look at it this way, I mean, if they're not using the room, it doesn't matter if there's tables and chairs set out here. Still have the forum that's available, and we can move a couple of things for...
Only a reason because there's tables.
They said that the meeting room would not be available for you for setup, because of setup. So, you know, if it's really a valuable thing to do, and it sounds like it is, and if it's worth the district's time, is it worth investing in her time to come back? I mean, that might be a yes. If that is, then let's look at that as an option, too. So that we're not trying to cram, I mean, I think seeing your project post-production would be actually higher value, too.
Well, yeah, it'll, it'll be in the process.
Yeah, yeah, you'd see it with a lot of things ready to grow in and mature, but yeah, that's, that's an important kind of endpoint to the, you know, the project.
But if we had somebody videotape her presentation and it was a PowerPoint, certainly that can be broadcast on Channel 4.
On YouTube, we have a YouTube channel, we can put it up on.
Yeah.
Okay.
If we have that, and then, but do we have that? I don't, I don't know.
Lonnie will video.
Lonnie will do it, okay.
He'll do it.
Thank you, Lonnie.
He's not here.
He's watching at home.
He's not here, because he's not here.
I mean, that's great. If you, if you want to do it, we'll try to get you, you know, I'm assuming that timing, 6:00 PM-ish.
Mm-hmm.
The difficulty is, yeah, I'm not going to be here, and I'm the one that has the keys to get to that building.
I do have, um...
That's, that'll be another...
Maybe we can go earlier.
But the...
The pass codes and the whole thing, I mean, it's not just...
We're allowed to share that with one, one board member.
Um...
Let's go in.
I mean, I'm sure we can sort it out. I'm just putting that, you know, when I think of, you know, how we're going to get it done, we have to be real that, oh yeah, if everybody shows up and nobody can get in the building, right? I don't want to have that happen, right, so...
Is there any way to do that meeting, like 4 to 6, by any chance?
Well, again, you know, we may not be...
Be pretty muddy?
Yeah, we may be, you know...
It's all annoying, the floor is over there, come on.
Yeah, we'll take you as you are.
Put on some waders.
Well...
Clean up.
I'll shower upstairs.
I can certainly speak with her and we can...
We can sort out the specific time?
If we can do it on the 1st, we can then sort out the specific time and...
Let's figure out how to do it on the 1st.
Okay. It just saves her, it's a long drive from Bandon, and, so...
Well, and I'm sure stuff will come up while she's here, that would be good information that...
Right.
So you're going to have your whole meeting on that day? Now I want to be clear on that.
We could take care of our goal prioritization.
I mean, what else do we have to do that day?
I think it'd be pretty easy to take care of goal prioritization, have a presentation from her, and limit it to those things.
So then you wouldn't have a, you wouldn't need an October 8th meeting?
Okay.
Short meetings every month?
Maybe.
Good.
That's on my goal list.
Okay, so October 1st will be the next meeting of the Devil's Lake Water Improvement District. Do you want to choose the time and really, I mean, because it's, we can announce it now?
Why?
Okay.
Whatever timework that we...
But it'll be at the Oregon Coast Community College campus. Charlie, you're off the hook. He's giving an okay. Thank you, our videographer extraordinaire.
Are we okay for that, Rick?
Is Charlie volunteering to come and videotape?
Okay. Well, that, that's what I had for my non-agenda item. Thank you, by the way, thanks for...
Thanks, okay.
Any other non-agenda items?
I just wanted to bring up, and I, I've talked to Paul about this, and Paul, I thought you put out a pretty good press piece on the horrible stench on Horseshoe Bay. Was that two weeks ago?
It's still going.
It's ongoing, but yeah.
Off and on.
It was really bad, two weeks ago.
Yeah, it started kind of a couple weeks ago, kind of...
And I had a local neighbor come up to me in a public setting and said it was a septic leak, which terrified me. And anyhow, I appreciate you going out and testing it, putting out the information, but for those of you who don't know, that is rotting algae, and it smells that bad. It's horrific. But yeah, I think we should say that here tonight for people that didn't read that press. I don't want people to think that a neighbor's septic is leaking or the city has spilled sewer. It's just dead algae and super unfortunate situation for those neighbors. And I would love to figure out a way to dredge that or get it so that doesn't happen, because that is...
It's, it's, it's a rotting, you know, like you're saying.
It's awful.
And it happens like in Thompson Creek Canal, often happens in there. Basically, anywhere that gets trapped and the wind can't move it back out. Of course, like this big southwest wind we had is just going to make that even worse and it, you know...
Well, and I think in the future, if our lake level is a little higher, that will help, too, because we won't have that exposed shoreline. The mud.
Well, the mud actually is oxygenated, so it's, your anoxic water areas where you often get the smelly degradation. The mud tends to get, have enough hair in it to help break that down aerobically, more so than water-covered, but, yeah.
It's gross.
It does stink, it's horrible. It's anoxic. The water becomes, moving towards anoxia, you know, it has low dissolved oxygen and because it's trying to, you know, decomposition requires oxygen.
Tell Dr. Warren to put extra aerators in there.
Okay.
Any other non-agenda items from the board? Additional citizen comments with Miles?
I've got two updates I'd like to give you. The first is the Devil's Lake Dash. Because of our luncheon meeting with the mayor, Tina French and Ed Dreistad, we're trying to put a band together to make an evening event for the city so that we get a better show at the two days of racing. And the promoter from Salem, Bill Cox, thinks he'll be prepared for our October meeting, but he was thinking it would be the first, the second Tuesday, and now it's going to be the first, so I will communicate that with him. But he was ready to make a presentation and get your support, blessing, financial, whatever he has intended, but in October, so that we could go to work on it and make a bigger splash in the community.
Right.
The second thing I'd like to call to your attention, about 18 months ago, at a public hearing, I presented a written plan and I submitted it, three or four copies of it. I believe Paul has a copy also from the meeting suggesting aeration and suggesting the D River dredging and a state-of-the-art dam. And I heard this, this evening that you are going to the Army Corps of Engineers, and I'd like you to at least discuss with them what their charge would be to, to get a gate that it can open and close and be state-of-the-art for salmon going in and coming out, and maybe prepare the dam so that it could be extended to new sea level heights if there is global warming and the sea rises two feet, which it's supposed to do with one scenario, but get an idea of what it would cost for the design center, because the Corps of Engineers did the New Orleans rebuilding and levees and gates that open and close, and I think that they are the person that can, or the agency that can accomplish that objective.
Couple things, Miles, if you find that, that you can, the gentleman about the Devil's Lake Dash can make a presentation, if you could get ahold of Paul and we'll, we'll make some time for him at our October 1st meeting.
I will do that if he can do it by the 1st.
Okay.
Okay.
And, and secondly, Bill and I and some members of the Devil's Lake Neighborhood Association met with the people that are in charge of Lake Oswego, that they were this week ago, I think it was. And it was interesting, one of the things I got out of that conversation was, they redid their dam, and they actually got a grant from FEMA to help with the cost of that, which is the first I had ever heard of anything like that. And one of the reasons why they got the grant from FEMA was because it prevented 280 homes from being in the floodplain by redoing their dam. So there may be some funds out there that we've never heard about before of redoing a dam that might help us in that regard. So I know that that was one nugget that I took away from that meeting.
Very good.
Thank you, Miles.
Thanks, Miles.
Mark Hyland, 2170 Northeast Lake Drive. I'd have to reiterate, I think, what Miles just said about that, I think it's a great idea to, you know, look into that with the Corps of Engineers. And, because we've, there's been a lot of discussion off and on about a state-of-the-art type dam, and I think it's an excellent time to, you know, be thinking about that in the, in the overall scheme of things. Just real quick, like, and by the way, great job on the goals and prioritization and that sort of thing, and it'll be interesting to see how we come up with that. I just had a question. I'm looking at number three, and I'm just going to read it real quick, just so that everybody in the audience, if they don't have it, they're in front of them as well. It says, "Reduce nutrient loading to Devil's Lake from onsite septic systems by supporting extension of a cost-effective sewer around the watershed by a means which does not enable detrimental development." I'm not quite sure what that means. Can you tell me what that means? Which does not, and primarily, it's the, which does not enable detrimental development?
I can tell you where I think the statement came from, and it is, one of the things, I went down and met with the county planner after we got the Buildable Lands survey, and we talked about that, and, and his, his parting, his welcoming statement and his parting statement were, be careful what you ask for, because in his summation, putting a sewer around the back of the lake could increase homes by anywhere from 900 to 1,400 homes. And he said, by far, the, the environmental impact of that from, from external loading issues would far outweigh the gains that you would get from a sewer. And so I think, and while I didn't write this, and I'm not sure, I'm assuming Paul or, I don't know who wrote this statement, but I think that that's what it's referring to.
Okay. Because the way I wrote it or read it was, and I don't happen to have a piece of available land or a lot that's on the lake or anything like that, but I would hate to see somebody, you know, deprived of being able to develop and put a home on the lake once the lake, especially for those that have not had availability to put a septic tank until, you know, because it wasn't...
Sure, I agree 100%.
Yeah, so, I just wanted to clarify why that...
See, I do see the planner's point of view, too, that, you know, we may have a lot of unintended consequences by putting a sewer around the lake. You know, you get 1,400 new homes because now you've increased urban growth boundary.
Right.
I mean, there's definitely things to, to take into consideration there, that a sewer is not, not necessarily going to get us in the positive for nutrient reduction if we have increased development.
Right. Well, especially when the county's...
Maybe you leave things the way they are and replace the septics that need replaced.
Right.
I don't know. That's why I want to know where nutrient loading comes from.
There you go. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Any other comments from the audience? Board? We are adjourned. Thank you all for coming again.